Board Member Terry Hodge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, our nation, with all due diligence, for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. All right. Moment of silence. We'd like to remember Dr. Linda Gilbert, Director of Murfreesboro City Schools, who tragically and suddenly passed away yesterday. We know the importance of public education. Dr. Gilbert was one of the strongest champions and spent her lifetime advocating for children. Her passing would be a huge loss for our community. Also, in that, want to remember her husband, Steve, son Brian, daughter Cherry, and the grandchildren. Join us for a moment of silence. Okay. Next is approval of the agenda. We have a motion on the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's? Okay, approval of the consent agenda?
It is approved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's? All right. Next we'll... Recognition. Have any visitors? No visitors? Thank you. Recognition, Mr. Spurlock?
Yeah, the board and myself would like to recognize the following list of contractors who volunteered fuel adjustments to assist during the pandemic. Reba Adams, Rick Adams, Audra Osip, Philip Elouise, Jason Baltimore, David Barrett, Robert James Boyce, Kerry Boyce, Deborah Brandon, Kathy Brandon, Alvin Brandon Senior, Allison Brown, Sally Brown, Tracy Bonham, B. Dale Campbell, Vicki Campbell, James Campbell, Ronald Carrigan, Ann Carroll, Jerry Church, Diane Church, Lowell Duke, Trinette Edwards, Willie Edgerton, Diane Eubank, Ryan Fisher, Melody Fisher, Don Fritz, Mickey Gannon, Cindy Gossett, Greg Gant, Philip Heath, Terry Hires, Dana Hobbs, Gail Howell, Doug James, Janet Johnson, Catherine Lucius, Brian Neal, Ples Nelson, Regina Parker, Johnny Perkins, Michelle Phillips Loggins, Donna Richardson, Stephen Ricketts, Solomon Sodamo, Clarissa Smith, Sheila Smotherman, Jerry Smotherman, Gaetha Spain, Billy Spurling, James Stimm, Johnny Step, Patty Step, Doug Stevens, John Swater, Henry Swater, Deborah Swater, Wayne Thomas, Tyrondo Ron Thompson, Michael Webb, Karen Young, and Doris Young. I'd like to thank those contractors.
We do. We appreciate what they do from Broffel County.
Absolutely, every one of them.
Okay. Facilities?
Yeah, facilities, found on Tab 2. Smyrna Middle School, Principal Theo Wana Hatchett has requested permission to rework existing restrooms and the football field office. The scope of the work will be as described, and from a letter from Dow Smith Construction, is estimated a cost of $15,000. The funding source is a donation committed from Dow Smith. This request is at no cost to the school board. Engineering Construction has reviewed this request and approves this project. Before we get to the motion, I'd like to thank Mr. Dow Smith as a Smyrna graduate and also actually spent many times in that fieldhouse a long, long time ago. It was well thought of on his part to contribute that amount. Motion to approve renovation to the Smyrna Middle School football fieldhouse restroom as presented.
No move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's? Motion carries. Okay, B, Highway 96.
All right, as it was presented by, well, presented by Mr. Lee the other day, Bart Coffin Associates and other design team members have completed the preliminary analysis for the property on Highway 96. They've completed hydraulic history, hydraulic analysis, ground and aerial survey, preliminary traffic study, soil and rock boring for the building and locations. We have provided patented portions of the various reports for this meeting. Of the 154 acres, only 83 are viable for use. The configuration of the 83 acres is also a limiting factor. Based on the findings of testing, the land will not support a middle school and a high school. However, we believe the land would support a middle and elementary layout. Based on this, Engineering offers three options for the board to consider. Option 1 would be to opt out of the purchase. Option 2 would be negotiate with the city to purchase 83 acres. Option 3 would be negotiate the purchase price per acre based on the information we have. Motion to approve, option 1, opt out of the purchase. Option 2, negotiate with the city to purchase 83 acres. Option 3, negotiate to purchase the price per acre based on the information that was provided by Mr. Lee.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion for opt-out.
I'm sorry, what was the mo...
Motion for opt-out.
Okay. Have a second? Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions?
I would be against opting out at this time. I think there needs to be some more discussions and I think there's still some land here that we can utilize to build two schools. We don't have a backup plan, so I would be against that option at this time.
Mr. Lee, in your report the other night, there was a variety of different information that you provided about some of the things, and I think you even mentioned in the, in what we were just discussing about some problems. I think my question would be for you, have we purchased any land in the past that was similar to this? And if so, could you kind of give us the locations?
Make sure my mic is on. It was not. Just most all, the recent property that we've purchased...
Be specific when you talk about recent property.
Okay. Well, Rockvale Elementary, which hasn't been purchased recently, but that property, when it was purchased, it had sinkholes on it. They were mitigated. There's still presently one sinkhole on Rock, at Rockvale Elementary that's being, that's utilized for stormwater runoff. Rockvale Middle and High, when we built Rockvale Middle, we mitigated four carst feature sinkholes there. They're still too active on the property. Oakland Middle, Brown's Chapel, Whitworth Buchanan, Rocky Fork Middle and Elementary. Similar type properties that have dirt, rock, wetlands, rivers on the sides. I guess, I mean, technically, Tan Oaks would fall into that same category. The Matthews property, a little bit. It has some flooding issue on the front with an adjacent neighbor. I'm not aware of any sinkholes on the Matthews property or Tan Oaks at this time, but similar dirt, similar features. Just about every school that we've dealt with in the last few years does have something similar to what I'm going to call the high ground, the good ground of this property.
Let me ask you this, on the scope in which we, that we've done with the property on 96, is it comparable to the other work that we've done prior to purchasing the land?
What do you mean?
In terms, how far have we gone? Have we gone in excess of what we normally do?
As far as testing goes?
As far as testing goes.
Yes, sir. We've gone in excess. In the past, we would typically do the aerial survey, the soils testing, traffic studies, preliminary analysis. On this one, we've actually gone further. We actually did the rock borings, which showed us the crevices at the middle school, the voids in the rock. We don't typically, we haven't done that in the past. It's something that after Rocky Fork Elementary, it's something we're going to make standard as part of what we do. The other thing that we've done further this time, we've actually gone further with engineering and analysis than we typically do in the past, than we have in the past.
I think we have done some due diligence on this property, but what we don't know is what and how much it's going to cost to mitigate this property with the sinkholes. Because this piece of property is attached to the Percy Priest water table, you can't concrete cap those sinkholes there. And regardless how much, and that came from a Vanderbilt graduate who is an engineer. And if we don't know how much it is, it doesn't matter how much or how less the property is, if we don't know what it's going to cost going in to mitigate those sinkholes.
I had a, I'll just say, I've had two long conversations with Mr. Lee. I had one as of yesterday, when I saw put in the paper about all the sinkholes, which I had some questions on that, so I contacted Mr. Lee, addressed that one with him. As far as, you correct me if I'm wrong, as far as what you told me, I believe, you said the sinkholes of concern were up in the far corners somewhere, not where you anticipate putting actual schools.
They were in the location, our preliminary location of the middle school, on the north side of the Colonial Pipeline. That's why we elected not, said that the middle school, high school would not work on this site. With the elementary, middle school, you can, or we could, if we were to purchase it. You could put practice fields. A middle school does not have structures like a high school does for dugouts, bleachers, that sort of thing. So you could put playing fields up there, and we wouldn't have to do much, if anything, to those. Be similar to Rockvale High, the ones that are on the north side, or actually on the west side of the ballfields there. So the buildings would be on the south side of the Colonial Pipeline, and the borings didn't indicate anything, any problems there.
I guess, going back to what we discussed, in your judgment, if we used it for a middle school and a elementary, you wouldn't anticipate any problems based on what you've seen?
No, sir. Not on that side, no, sir.
Who wants to?
Yes.
Well, first of all, of course, I voted against pursuing this property to begin with because of all these concerns. And when I look at the fact that we've spent, the board spent $60,000 doing the due diligence, which I certainly didn't disagree with, we needed to do it since it was voted on to pursue it anyway. I think that due diligence in this engineer's report has pretty much proven out so many of our concerns, or at least some of us that had concerns about this land and this property to begin with. And when I hear you talk about practice fields and stuff, I'm not particularly inclined to want to spend the taxpayers' money on $27,000 or whatever per acre to build a bunch of practice fields either. I just think this would be poor stewardship of the money that we're entrusted with to buy this piece of property with all the doubts and all the holes that are in this, no pun intended, maybe. In retrospect, I look back on it now, the other night, and I wished I'd thought to ask this, that perhaps since we spent so much money paying these guys to do the work that they did, that perhaps it would have been a good idea to bring those engineers in to present to the board themselves and let us be able to ask them questions directly. But since this is on the agenda to vote on tonight, I guess we don't have time to do that, but I will definitely not be voting to pursue this property.
You want to ask?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions.
Okay.
Mr. Lee, we've looked at some other properties out there. Particularly, we looked at a property on Ammerville and 96, correct? That was before we made it on the board?
Yes, yes.
Did we spend money to determine whether that was viable land as well?
Yes, ma'am.
About how much did we spend there? Do you remember?
I would say $25,000 to $30,000.
Is that about the standard practice before we make?
It depends on the property. We typically spend between $25,000 and $40,000.
And the practice fields, we're going to have those regardless, right? We, I mean, my kids go to middle school at Rockvale, so we have practice fields out there before we had the high school. We do that naturally with our school.
All middle schools are built today with practice fields.
There's no way of getting around, I mean, we wouldn't do that to our students.
You mean not having practice fields?
Yes.
It would be very difficult for a middle school. We have them at all the other middle schools that we've built.
And a question as it pertains to the money as well. I saw some information that potentially we have already paid Murfrees, the city of Murfreesboro, the seller of the property, for their testing and whatnot. There's been no financial exchange between the seller and us currently.
No, ma'am. The only thing that's been put, I think there was, was there $5,000?
And how much was that?
Well, earnest money is typical in any real estate.
Yes, that's the only thing. $10,000 in earnest money.
Contingent, but this had...
Contingent on the purchase, yes.
So we could, we get our money back.
Yes.
Potentially. And then there's a property in Laverne that we've talked about often. I think Ms. Sharp has brought it up, that we could build on it, and you said, "No, we can't build on it." Forgive me, I don't remember the name of the school. Can you tell us if this land is comparable to that land?
Are you referring to the land between Laverne Lake Elementary and Laverne Middle?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be correct?
I believe that's it, the dirty dirt, yeah.
We, that land is a fill pit, basically. We used a low area, and I, forgive me, I don't know the acreage, it's a little over 100 acres when they bought that property some years back. It has numerous large sinkholes that has drainage. Those are the wooded areas. The area where the ballfields are was a low area. When we built Laverne Lake Elementary, there were some boulders and things that came off the, when they were doing blasting, and we used those low areas as a fill pit, which is fairly typical in construction. And then we capped it off with dirt, which made the playing fields, and a portion of that has the geothermal wells also from the elementary school. That area where those balls fields are is not, we would have to basically take them away from the middle school, and then they wouldn't have any playing fields. That area, we're using up what I'm going to call the good area to put the annex on for the middle school. The property, there's, we do own some additional property around the elementary, up on the hill, but it's fairly steep and rocky. I don't know that it would be, it'd be very expensive to develop due to the steepness of it, and it would preclude us from putting in addition onto the elementary.
We kind of have some of that, those issues with a lot of our properties, correct? Like Stewart's Creek, I think, is one of the schools that has about 20 acres that's deemed...
It's in the floodplain, yes.
Okay.
Oakland Middle has some area in the floodplain.
So did I read the article correct, that we have stopped construction on our Tan Oaks due to finances?
We haven't, we haven't been approved to even begin construction on Tan Oaks. We did bid the project, but it has not been approved to go forward.
But we're not asking for any money for it in this budget? Are we asking for money for that project in this budget?
It would be different from the budget. It would be part of our, it would be part of the building program. It would come separate.
Mr. Lee, can you clarify what you meant by "hasn't been approved"? Because I thought we had approved everything to move forward.
No, we approved the bid process.
Okay.
I just received the bids last week, so it hasn't been brought to you to be approved to go to Health and Ed to request funding for the construction site.
I think the confusion may be that there was an article in the newspaper that quoted either a director or finance about us agreeing to postpone construction. I don't want to, I'm paraphrasing here because I don't have an article from me.
It didn't come out of this, it didn't come out of this office. I mean, and I, any of you guys had Broden speak to you?
I had him, but, I mean, we're, that's all pending, like Trey Lee said, I told him that it's all pending on the bond being approved by the commission.
That's what you said?
But that's what I said, yeah.
And the next step would be you bring it before the board?
Yes.
And then the board approves it, and then we take it to Health and Ed.
Yes, we have received the bids for the construction for Tan Oaks and the construction of Laverne Middle, and it's our intent to bring them to the next board meeting for your guys, like we always do, for y'all's vote to move, request funding, to move forward. And then we would go to Health and Ed, and then it would go to the county commission.
Thank you.
But no, we haven't stopped anything.
Okay. My concern, because that's how I read that article, and I'll give you the picture when, after the meeting.
I would, I mean, I'm not saying it wasn't in there, but I think we'd all...
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's just, that was my, my line of questioning, and if it was...
And that's what I'm saying, I think there's a lot of inaccuracies that occurred.
If it was inaccurate, I'm, no harm, no foul, but my question was...
Ms. Sharp, I'm talking about the writer, not you.
Right, no, that's, you know, if there's a misquote or something like, no harm, no foul. But as I read it, and I, my line of thinking was, if we haven't approved this and we're not spending money on this piece of property, that is going to alleviate the portables from four schools, but we're going to buy this piece of property, we're a little bit further along on the Tan Oaks. So that was reason, my line of question.
I think we forgot, explain to them about, I mean, I don't know if Ms. Johnson or Ms. Sharp was on when we went to the commission for the funding for three pieces of property. Explain, you know that.
Okay. There was two or three different steps in this scenario that's been going on, and it does get confusing. The first thing we did as a system is went to the county commissioners and requested funding for three pieces of property. All three pieces of property were for multi-school complexes, and they approved a dollar figure.
I think it was like 10 million, something like that.
Yeah, well, that was, it was actually, it was more like 12 for the land.
That's right.
And I'll get to the 10 million in just a second. That's where it's getting confusing for everybody. The county commission basically approved $12 million for us to go buy land. And with this, we find the land, make the deal, then they, y'all vote to purchase it or not, and if you do, we move forward. So we've got two out of the three, Tan Oaks, Walter Hill, and then we're looking for the piece on this side of town. That's step one. That was to purchase the property. Once we got Matthews and Tan Oaks, we went back to the county, went to Health and Ed, trying to get funding to build the school. Mr. Gurley and the Health and Ed Commission said, "Y'all are not far enough along, we don't know where you're going to be as far as the school goes." And we sat there that night, and we came to $10 million for the grading portion of the Tan Oaks property has been authorized. Hasn't been officially funded because we hadn't needed the money yet. But that $10 million was authorized by Health and Ed. We tried to get the building the same night, and that was last fall. And there, I don't want to put words, but I'm going off memory, Mr. Gurley and the board said, "If you'll come back after Christmas," because we told them then, "We thought we would know what the building would look like." And they said, "Y'all come back after Christmas, and we'll vote on that, but you've got 10 million to go ahead and start the site." That's where the 12 million and the 10 million came from. So now we're, we have bid out, finished the design, bid out Tan Oaks, then out, bid out Laverne Middle, which are all on our building program. Now that we have that, the next step for that is to come before you guys, discuss whether it's in budget or out of budget. It's part of your approved building program. Do you want to move forward with it this year? And we'll vote on that at our next board meeting, and then we'll go through the process, dependent upon your vote of going to Health and Ed, and then on to the county commission for funding. So this has been a little confusing because of the numbers and the timing and the way it's been done. It's not typically done this way. Typically, we've had land, and it's just the construction and everything, and the site works all been in one package.
No, Mr. Spurlock, I knew that we had the 10 million plus set aside for the property, and that we had bought those two pieces of property. My concern was that I thought that we were not going to fund the Tan Oaks, but we were still going to purchase this property. If we're not going to fund Tan Oaks, which we already have on site and everything, why would we buy more property? That's just my, even though we have the money, it's already funded, why would we buy more property when we have a lot of property that we're not doing anything with?
It's my understanding that the Blackman area is the one we have the most need for, right? If we look at all three...
Think how long this worked out, okay? We were looking for a piece of property, and I think we found a piece of property on 840 and close to, what's the, what's that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear Mr. Young's question.
He was talking about Blackman was the, was the area we were looking for first. We did, it wa...
Well, this has been going on for, prior to you, to your tenure. I mean, prior to you becoming director, we've been trying to find land on that side of town. The first piece we found was 840 Ammerville Road, but it was on the north side of Ammerville, a couple hundred acres. It went all the way to, it went through here, it went all the way to the county commission. And the county commission stopped it and said, "No, we're not, we're not going to authorize you to buy that piece of property." Then the next piece that we found was right after you took over, was the piece Mr. Clardy brought to y'all, which was on the corner of Ammerville Road, 96, and 840. That was the next piece. And we went through all of these same steps, except to the rock drilling and the wetlands, to find that there was caves on it. And that piece, we were under contract with it, and that piece went away. So there's been, over the last, we've been looking for land in the Blackman area for going on four years.
And we haven't had any luck. And this is, piece of property here is the only option we've had available to even consider, that I'm aware of, since the last property we looked at. No one's brought any other properties to us. There's no other options other than this 96 property at this time, is what I'm understanding.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
The need is there, and I know all the growth is in that area, that's where we're having the most trouble with overcrowding. I don't know why we would take this piece of property here off the table completely if we can utilize some of that property. That's, that's my argument, is if 83 acres can be used out there, we need to be looking at how we can use it and get something going out there, because we're losing time. We've wasted a lot of time already, so we can't keep kicking the can down the road, the way I look at it.
Anybody else? Mr. Clardy? Mr. Clardy? Mr. Lee? Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm reverting back to, old people do that, yeah.
That's okay.
You feel comfortable with the information we have for the elementary and the middle school?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, that doesn't mean the entire 154?
I understand.
Okay. Just making sure we're clear.
Okay. As far as the motion that Ms. Sharp made to opt out, I can go along with opting out on the property as long as we went back and negotiated for the land to put the middle and elementary school on.
I think the way we have on the agenda is that would be a really different option.
No, when I'm in opt-out altogether, opt out of the purchase.
Yeah, I think it's on there, it says, you got three, which is opt out, to negotiate to purchase the acreage that you need, or to negotiate to reduce the amount per acre to purchase the entire piece of land. And I think y'all've got a motion, a second motion on opting out.
Okay.
I guess what you'd have to do is...
Make each one of them?
Correct me, Mr. Reed. The contract we've got is for the 154 acres, correct? What we're looking to do is kill that contract, or what I, I'm along the lines, Mr. Estes, I guess, kill that contract, and I'd be interested to see what they'd negotiate 83 acres for, would be another contract, I guess.
You can negotiate another contract, yes.
That would be option three then, right?
Well, that, well, there's, there's two, and maybe I wasn't very clear. Option one is to opt out altogether, and we don't do anything. Option two is to go back to the city and say, "We're not interested in 154..." Option two is to go back to the city and say, we're not interested in a hundred and fifty-four acres, we only wanna purchase, interested in eighty-three, will you split it? That would be that. The third option is to buy it all, but at a much reduced price, because you can't use a large portion of it.
So what would be your definition of a much reduced price? I mean, it's, it's all kind of ambiguous.
Okay, well, no more than what we paid for Rocky Fork Elementary, total price, two million six.
What's that for acres?
For, at a hundred and fifty-four acres, it's about eighteen, seventeen thousand an acre.
The eighty-three acres.
For the eighty-three, it would be, it, it's a, um, no, if we're just doing the eighty-three, it would be at the twen-, at the appraisal price, twenty-seven, at the appraisal. The eighty-three acres would be the appraisal price. What we're doing now is negotiating not to buy it all. That would be option two, at the present price. Option three, if they said, no, it's an all or none deal, then the only way I would recommend buying it all is it would have to be at a greatly reduced price, not at the purchase price.
Right, that's, that's what I was asking.
And it would be more like, for the hundred and fifty-four, probably seventeen an acre, which would put it at two million six, which would be about the same that we paid for Rocky Fork Elementary, the seventy-five acres there. Does that make sense?
Either way it works out.
Sir?
Either way it works out, dollar wise.
Yes, sir.
How, how about a, a fourth option? Let's table this and wait till we go to budget and Health and Ed and see where our money lies and see what we have. We may need some of this money, although it's allocated for this property, we may need it for our budget.
You can't do that. You can't swap it from, it's two different platforms. You can't do it from construction, this is construction or, or building program money. You can't use, it's bond money, and you can't use it in general purpose.
Can't balance.
Well, we still have other properties that we're working to build on. I, I just don't see at this time, where everything is economically, that we should spend all of our money. I mean, if this was a great piece of property, I'd be all for it. This is not a great piece of property. Obviously, nobody else wants it, or it would've already been snapped up. And why we're spending this money at, at this time in economics, we don't even know if our teachers are gonna get a raise.
I think the problem is, though, Ms. Sharp, is that we're talking about two different sets of money. This money was allocated specifically for purchasing land, which we've already been in agreement on, on some other pieces of property.
Right, but it can't, it's a procedural maneuver. It can be used, if I'm not mistaken, on another piece of land that we've already bought.
Right, and as a mother of students in Rockville community, we need, we need schools over there. We are in portables, there's some portables that are busting at the seams, the principals are trying to repair them on their own.
Hey, I'm in Laverne, remember? Portable.
I know where you are, I'm just suggesting that, I mean, I had an opportunity to tour the Stewart's Creek schools, and there are teachers with classrooms and closets. They have, they have students in the hallway.
Laverne middle in the hallway.
I mean, you're talking about overcrowding, and I agree with you, I don't wanna spend money that we don't have to spend, but I think that we have a very great need that is.
I don't disagree with the need, what I disagree with is the quality of the property. And we shouldn't just be taking something because it's available.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
That's, that's it.
Mr. Reed, do, I, I go back to what I think Mr. Young or Mr. Hodge was alluding to, do we have, do the, does the board not have to make a motion to opt out of the original contract first, before you can go back and inspect, or?
Well, we've got an inspection period, so we're still in inspection period now, so we, we can negotiate. Prior to the expiration of the inspection period, we have ninety days from when the contract was first signed, so we have through July second currently, to negotiate with the city prior to the expiration of our, of our inspection period. So if we want to go back to the city and negotiate during that period of time, you can do that. If the board does want to go ahead and terminate the contract now, it can also go ahead and terminate the contract then, and then say, we're gonna terminate the existing contract, but we would like to negotiate with you for the purchase of the eighty-three acres at whatever price you guys can agree to.
Personally, that's, that's what I'd rather do, if I'm not mistaken, the other night. Mr. Lee, I don't, I don't think you're interested in keeping up all this extra land, are you?
No, sir.
I'm not, I guess based on that, I'm not interested in seeing us pursue that avenue for a hundred and fifty-four acres.
Mr. Lee, question, and I don't know if you can do this or put the map up, and you may have shown us the other night, but if, if we did pursue the buying or requesting to purchase the eighty-three or whatever, that are supposedly viable.
Keep going, John, I'll tell you when to stop.
How does that cut it up? I guess the question, what I'm getting at with this at the end of the question is.
I'm fixing to show you.
Is it gonna cut it up in such a manner where the city's probably likely not considering it anyway?
It almost, I'm not real sure they're gonna wanna split it, period. I think it's gonna be, I, I, I'm not, I have not approached them, it may be an all or none deal with them.
Just, one thing I would point out is, even at a greatly reduced price, at seventeen thousand an acre, essentially what this engineering report's come back with is there are seventy-one unusable acres, even at seventeen thousand an acre, we're paying out a million two for land that's unusable.
Well, I wouldn't use the term unusable, it's unusable to build a school.
But that's, that's the priority, though.
I don't disagree.
We didn't bring the pointer, did we?
Is it on the pot, sodium?
Oh, it's in a bag, I didn't see it.
It would basically run from about right here, like this, something like this. We would buy, I would be looking to purchase this side, and they would keep this side.
They said we're cutting out the good land, the high land, that we know that we can build on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense. Why would you buy land you wouldn't need?
That, that's why I'm saying, i- i- if that was the option, it would be this quadrant right here that we can build on. Some of this here is buildable, it's just not a large enough piece for us. So that's why I don't wanna make the inference that it's not usable, it's just not usable for us.
And so I think we beg the question here, too, because we'd already determined that there needed to be a high school and a middle school here when we initially went into this, correct? So where do we put our high school?
Look for another piece of land for the high school.
There's another, another point, Mr. Lee, you may mention, I asked you about some other land on Veterans, only other big plot I know of out there. You told me who owned it, and you mentioned that the further we come back in, the more cost we're gonna have, correct?
Yes.
The further we go out, the more cost we're gonna have.
There's not, where we're at, it, in my opinion, going out further's not an option, 'cause we can't, the dirt further out, there's not enough dirt to sustain a standalone sewer system like we have at Wilson Elementary or Kitchell or something like that. Because according to the county and the state soils map, there's not enough dirt on any piece of property large enough to sustain its own sewer system. And we're about at the cutoff where economics to run a forced main sewer back into town, you get beyond the point that you can maintain it. You get so much head pressure that you can't maintain your system. So we're, that's kind of at the mile, mile and a quarter, somewhere along that line, is kind of where your, Tan Oaks is similar to that. I mean, it's, we're doing a pump station there, it's a little over a mile, that's kind of about as long as you wanna go. We've got one at Walter Hill that comes back in town. So going out further's really not an option. The only option from there is this distance or come back into town. As you come back into town, there's, I thought we had something going with the guy that had a piece on the opposite side of the road, but it didn't, changed his mind, didn't wanna do anything. You get around Veterans Parkway, the starting price is fifty-five to sixty thousand an acre, and it goes up from there. The difference being, though, you're closer to water and closer to sewer. So you kind of have to weigh your infrastructure utility costs versus the price per acre. So if I go into town, you can kind of justify maybe paying a little bit more per acre, because you're not expending the money for water and sewer. You take a piece of property, and I'm just gonna use the current one, Tan Oaks, it's further out, you get a lesser price, therefore you can somewhat maybe justify eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for CUD to upgrade the water system and running, you know, a mile for sewer. You have to kind of weigh it, but yes, as you come into town, the price is gonna go up, and it's gonna go up quick.
Mr. Lee, you'd mentioned earlier, you said something about having looked at some land, was it Tuesday you said?
Ma'am?
That you'd looked at some land.
I've been looking at land. No, I did not look at land last week, no. I, I look at land.
Okay, perhaps I misunderstood.
I ride and look, see what's available and what, where, if there's a for sale sign, every weekend, and I make phone calls on it.
I believe you said you and Mr. Estes had gone out and looked at some.
Oh, that was, that was back around Christmas time, that was further out, over off of, it was closer to the land out toward eight forty.
Back in that, what, Coleman Hill?
Coleman Hill, to the left, yes. We went and looked at four hundred acres there, that was brought to us by a developer, I mean, a real estate agent, but it's not enough, it wasn't, it was a nice-looking piece of ground, and it wasn't flat, it was fairly rolly. But the soils map indicates not enough soil for a standalone sewer, and it's further out than this, so the only way it would be viable is if we could put our own sewer system on the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm, I'm, I'll have to speak to this first, okay, before I say anything else. Uh, I, I'd like to find out where we stand, and if we're gonna have a, if we're gonna consider two, or three, or a four, or, or whatever, other options and directions in which to go. I, I think we're getting off in the weeds here just a little bit, maybe more than a little bit, and I'm gonna do something I haven't done in sixteen years of service, I'm gonna call for a question. I wanna know whether we're gonna opt out or not. And then we can go ahead and decide which direction this board wants to go in. So I call for the question, if it's proper, and I'm pretty sure it is.
Are you asking me?
No, sir, I'm making that motion.
Okay. A second.
Thank you. Got a motion for the question?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question first? Are we voting, do we have to opt out in order to consider one of the other options?
No. The motion that's before the board is to opt out, so that's the only motion, as I understand it, before the board, it's just to opt out. If the board wants to take up a further motion to negotiate something else with the city, you can make another motion to negotiate a new deal with the city, which would be a second motion or a separate motion than the motion that's on the floor now. The motion as it is on the floor now is an opt-out motion, just opting out of the contract, which I would interpret to mean to terminate the contract.
Thank you.
Okay, but just so we're clear here, my motion is to take that vote, right? It's not that vote, it's to, it's to take the vote now. And really, as far as I remember my Roberts Rules of Order, that's, that does not permit debate.
Correct, there's no debate, correct.
My motion doesn't.
Your, your, at this time, a vote has to be taken.
All right, and then we can come back if we want to and negotiate with the city or make a motion.
The board can take up and consider a second motion after the motion that's on the floor now, if the board chooses to do that.
Motion's been made, dropped out, a second, and questions called. Ms. Michaels, you call the roll, please.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
No.
No. Ms. Sharpe?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Sharpe?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
No.
Okay, we have a motion on one of the other options.
I would like to make a motion that we consider option two, purchase eighty-three acres and negotiate with the city on the price there.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, questions?
And it will come back to us then, to discuss whatever we found, I just, I'm just trying to make this clear, right? And just like we're doing now, we can discuss, and I have no idea whether they will, well, that's the whole purpose of the motion, is to find out whether they'll sell us eighty-three or not. Um, but I, I sure do agree with some colleagues over here on my side of the room. Seventeen thousand dollars is a lot of money to pay for land that we're never gonna use or probably won't use to their fullest capacity, but we can find that out, that's the whole purpose, we can find that out when we negotiate with them.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, so we're, this motion is to negotiate the price of the eighty-three?
Yeah, just to purchase eighty-three and.
See if they will sell us eighty-three acres.
We don't know if they're even willing to do this.
Right, I, I just wanna be very clear, 'cause I, I can, I, I can support a motion to negotiate for the eighty-three, but the price is non-negotiable, I, I, I don't think that, so if it, it, I don't, I don't think that we should be offering more.
No, I mean, we don't even know.
Just to see if they'll take less, they'll allow us to buy less of the land.
Yeah, we have to find out if they're willing to sell us eighty-three acres.
Right.
And we can negotiate price or whatever we need to do, but we gotta find out first if they're even gonna sell, split it up, we don't know if they're gonna split it up.
So then my question would be, if they do decide to sell us the eighty-three, and that's an agreeable situation, is the issue gonna come back before the board for a price?
Yes, that would be correct. The first steps, find out if they even sell eighty-three. If they won't sell eighty-three, we've walked away, and there's no reason to go any further.
Because I, I can support the motion to negotiate for the eighty-three, but I cannot support a motion to negotiate eighty-three for more than what the property was valued at. I don't think we need land that we can't use, I agree with Ms. Moore, but if we know that eighty-three is good usable land, and that's all we need, then for what we've already offered, then I'm okay with that, but nothing more than what we've already offered per acre.
Yeah, we're not, we're not getting any contracts or anything like that.
I don't think we discussed offering more, did we?
No, ma'am, and that, I would not recommend that.
Just to be clear, yeah.
I would not recommend that.
We have a motion to negotiate purchase of eighty-three acres, and a second? Ms. Michaels?
Ms. Sharpe?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Spurlock, number nine.
All right, ESL District Wide Facilitator Position is funded by Title III funds, found on tab three. ESL District Wide Facilitator Position will be funded by, on tab three, this will be a two-hundred-and-twenty-day teacher contract, and as we said, is funded by the Title III funds. The qualification for this position is to hold a valid teacher's license with an ESL endorsement, a minimum of a master's degree, and a successful teaching experience with a minimum of five years of experience. They would report to the supervisor of English as a second language. Under this direction, the ESL coordinator provides assistance to teachers and school administrators to improve instruction for English language learners. The complete job description is attached. Motion to approve Rutherford County Schools Title III-funded ESL District Wide Facilitator as presented.
Have a motion?
We'll move.
Any second? Thank you. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's? Yeah, number ten.
All right, the next one is an ESL supplementary specialist that will be funded out of Title II funds. Rutherford County Schools currently funds one ESL specialist position that works with all schools. The specialist supports the instructional work for the ESL. The specialist supports the instructional work for the ESL teachers in all of our 48 schools, and for the 2021 school year, Rutherford County Schools would like to use some of these Title II Funds to add one additional ESL specialist position to maximize their effectiveness working with and providing training for teachers and administrators in these 48 buildings. Motion to approve Title II Funds to pay for one additional ESL specialist position for the 2020-2021 school year pending the approval of the fiscal 2021 from fiscal budget 2021 from the Tennessee State Department of Ed.
Have a motion?
We'll move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.
All right, 11 is just information only. This is a change in the job description for the position in the student services. Basically, what's happening here is this position, the person in this position is going to be reducing their contract to a 210-day contract because the separation of duties that will be taking place. Ms. Barrett, I think, is the one that we're referencing here. She will be handling the 504s exclusively, and the threat assessment part of her former description will be going into safe schools and will be brought before this board's probably next board meeting.
Any questions on that? Number 12.
Our number 12 is Title IV Funds for supplementary student service liaison. Rutherford County Schools currently funds one student service liaison position that works with all schools. This position supports the work of the teachers, counselors who work with students of 504 plans in all of the 48 schools. For the 2020-2021 year, Rutherford County Schools would like to use Title IV Funds, safe and healthy, to one additional student service liaison position to maximize their effectiveness working with teachers and counselors in these 48 buildings. Motion to approve Title IV Funds to pay for one additional student liaison position for the 2020-2021 school year pending the approval of the budget for the fiscal year 2021 from the Tennessee State Department of Ed.
Have a motion on that?
We'll approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 13.
13 is the Summer Conference, Rutherford County, Rutherford County Schools Summer Conference. This conference will be contracted in a virtual option, found on tab five. The Instructional Department is requesting the approval of the Contract of Staff Development for Educators for the Annual Teacher Professionals Development Conference. SDE will contract national presenters, design and maintain a website with registration, purchase the Zoom licenses, staff virtual session moderators, and manage online handouts for a two-day virtual conference for Rutherford County Schools District. SDE will gather the attendee analytics and records for us. In addition, SDE will provide online access for the Rutherford County Schools for recorded conference sessions for one school year, which will end in May 28, 2021. This will allow our teachers to get those additional two days of PD that they need. Also, the big takeaway here that I see is the ability to go back and watch it again and use it. Can I assume, let's see, where's my PD specialist? Will, will they be able to get those that did not attend the conference, will they be able to sign up for this? They can?
We have to prescribe the videos, and training can occur after school as well in groups.
This conference will occur July 22nd and 23rd in the virtual platform. The goal for it is to increase in achievement scores, reaching our AMO targets, and another goal is training effective teachers and district instructional leaders. The instructional coaches will disperse training into each of their schools. Motion to approve this contract between SDE Staff Development for Educators for the 2020 Rutherford County Schools Virtual Summer Conference at a cost of $150,000. Title II Funds will pay for 100% of the costs.
Okay, we have a motion?
We'll move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ellen. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 14.
Well, since 13 carried, 14 is, will not be necessary, so if we can move on to 15.
Okay.
All right, Financial Matters, Stewart Creek High School dugout booster club indoor batting facility request, it's found on tab six. Stewart Creek High School dugout booster club are asking for permission from Rutherford County Schools to build a 100-by-60 indoor hitting facility on campus of Stewart Creek High. This project will be paid entirely through the Stewart Creek High dugout boosters club with no construction costs to the Rutherford County School Board, and will be financed with an unsecured loan from Wilson Bank and Trust that the dugout booster club has secured. This project supports two school-sponsored sports, both softball and baseball teams, and it will meet the Title IX equity criteria. The plan renderings of the project are attached. All yearly, quarterly, monthly advertising donations, the sponsorships that are collected will be deposited into a debt retirement account at Wilson Bank and Trust, in which yearly principal payments will be made. The booster club's yearly financial contribution to the hitting facility project will be paid quarterly to the Wilson Bank and Trust. Once the project is approved by the school board, the school board's purchasing department will release a formal bid request for the project based on specifications that were outlined in the written request for the booster club. The sealed bids will be opened at the school central office a week later. It is stressed that, it is stressed that the booster club's bid, that the school purchasing department is only facilitating the construction. Bid to the awarded, to the, the bid would be awarded to the lowest and best proposal that meets the bid specifications. Motion to approve Stewart Creek dugout, dugout club project request as presented with no cause to the Rutherford County Board of Education.
Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, sir. Second? Thank you. Questions?
Just, just to make sure, clarification, that the word unsecured loan, which is exactly what it is, but the, I would assume that Wilson Bank and Trust is very aware that the school board is not responsible for this if something goes wrong.
Absolutely.
A booster club president moves away, and the finance director goes to, you know, South America.
Right.
With the money that we're not, we're sorry, but that's the way it goes.
Mr. Bodger, you want to speak on that?
Yes, sir, and I was thinking of you, Ms. Jordan, as I did my due diligence with this, so with the dugout club.
We've had problems before, as you're aware.
Yes, sir, I, I worked with Eddie Mosley and, and Kim Von Dlin, and they represented the dugout boosters club with this, and they, they were excellent to work with. Anything that I needed to make sure that all the questions of the board would be satisfied, or at least you could, I could follow up to get the answers, they were very prompt with getting the information, and I've, I've double-checked to make sure the, yes, the loan is, is unsecured, it is, there will be no lien of any type placed on anything that would be built on a school property, and the final amount for this construction cost came in at $148,800 is their estimate, and they, they have, like I said, they have, they have given me quite a bit of detail on this is where the revenue's coming, and this is our spinatures, and they have secured not only some very good donations, they, Crossland Building Supply has reached out and offered them 50% discount, you know, for these, this, this construction project for the children on the lumber.
Fair enough.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two.
All right, two is a general-purpose budget amendment, classified staff cleanup amendment, just moving around some money as far as salary and benefits, $177,500 in already budgeted pay, and $30,726 for related benefits, for a total of $208,226 in the classified hourly staff to the budget line items where it's needed. Most of these funds are coming from the regular ed EAs and bus aides, which were used to cover sped and alternative school EAs. Other items in the amendment cover implementation of the new attendance system and changes due to the experience, the experience approved for new employees. Motion to amend a total of $208,226 in already budgeted classified staff funds to the various budget line items as presented.
Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, sir. Second? Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three.
All right, number three is a review of the proposed fiscal, let's see, number three fiscal year GPS budget fund, considering the April 2020 revenues and potential upcoming state education funding decisions by the State General Assembly.
We, as we discussed at the, at the work session on Tuesday night, of course, we went through the, the revenues as they stood, and also discussed sales tax to date collections, and reviewed the potential, you know, to, to look at a 1.5% increase for both employees and the bus contractors, as opposed to what was, was passed by the school board previously at 2% for the employees and 5% for the contractors, and as you'll see, there was an addition later on this agenda. As the board had requested that, I, we, we have that for your consideration tonight. So based on the discussion that we had Tuesday night at the workshop, we've added that to the agenda for tonight.
Any questions, Mr. Bodger, on that?
Do have one question. What would be the difference in a one and a half versus two across the board?
Impacting the bottom line?
A $2 million decrease.
Yes, it is a... It is a de, a decrease of the budgeted deficit by $2,123,509.
Okay. Okay, number four.
All right, number four, an addition of one inclement weather day for classified hourly employees in the fiscal year 2020-2021 in the general-purpose school fund budget. Currently, the school board has six inclement weather days budgeted proposed fiscal calendar for 2021 in the general-purpose fund budget. This cost will add one additional inclement weather day for all hourly, non-12-month classified employees. If the school year was to extend an additional makeup day, this would require an additional budgeted funding of $135,000, $135,900 for the fiscal year 2021. So if we surpassed our 11 inclement weather days for certified, that would, we would incur that additional day for them to work, $133,000 in that. And I think what we talked about earlier, we're trying to put these in incrementally so it doesn't make a huge impact. We checked around, and Dr. Anthony, I think you checked Williamson, Mercer City, some of those, and I think eight and 10, is that what it was? So this will bring them up to seven. Motion to approve adding funding for one additional inclement weather day for all hourly, non-12-month classified employees into the proposed fiscal year 2021 general purpose school fund budget.
Okay, we have a motion?
Approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five.
Our number five is the CDI Head Start Early Termination Lease Amendment. The board approved lease, the board approved lease with CDI Head Start and is set to expire at the end of June 2020. The agency has been prompt at paying in monthly lease payments since CDI executed the current lease. The agency is currently wrapping up operations at the John Coman Annex location, and a final walkthrough with the school engineering and maintenance is scheduled for Friday, May the second, May the 22nd. CDI has already prepaid the lease payment for June 20th for this location. Motion to approve pending the final inspection, school engineer, by school engineering and maintenance to verify that Head Start operation has vacated John Coman Annex by May the 31st, 2020, and no damages to the premises has been incurred by CDI's operation. The school board ends the lease agreement with Mid-Cumberland Head Start slash CDI as part of the May 31st, 2020, and refunds the agency the prepaid lease payment for June 2020. This agreement shall be memorialized through and amended to the current lease.
Okay, we have a motion on that?
We'll approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six.
All right, six is the proposed school fund, 177, excuse me, 141 that we changed, the review of the May 19th board workshop of proposed 2021 fiscal year general purpose fund, general, general purpose school fund budget that has been following, that has the following two changes that was proposed to the 2020-2021 fiscal year. The general purpose school fund budget that was approved by the school board on April the 30th of 2020 board meeting, that one of the changes is for the certified and the classified pay raise to be decreased from 2% down to 1.5%, and to change, the, the second change is to change the bus contractor's raise from 5% down to 1.5%. Motion to approve the version of the two fiscal year 2020-2021 general purpose school fund budget and forward this proposed budget to the county's Health and Education Committee for consideration.
Motion?
We'll move.
Thank you. Second? I'll second it. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. I know we discussed this on Tuesday, and so essentially what we're saying is we're going to not do the 2% increase and the 5% increase, because that would deplete our fund balance by 2,000, or 2 million, I'm sorry.
A little over 2 million.
But that's based on?
What our, what our revenue, our projected revenue, and our ending fund balance, we would, our, and I think it's, he may have passed this out, I think he may, all right. If we, for example, if what we currently had, I think, was the 2%, and we were, and we were going to have to go into our ending fund balance at like, about $19,120,741, that would leave a projected beginning-ending fund balance at 4.47%, which is 1.47%, a little higher than the state requirement. All right, now, that, the, the second one, we're, we're going into $17,893,000. Now, that is, that number there is approximately $90,000 more than we went into our ending fund balance last year for this fiscal year. Okay, and it equates to a 1.9% increase of our overall budget, less than 2% of our overall budget. Now, I think he did put there on that one for information only, now, it's all predicated on the, the State Department of Education, on what they do when they come back in June. And then that's where we'll go from there. That's what, if voted on tonight, this is what we will bring forward next Wednesday? Is it next Tuesday? Tuesday. Next Tuesday at the courthouse, starting at 5:30, with options to be on Zoom. I think we've passed that, sent that out to everyone, okay? And, and that will, what will be brought forward to them.
I can see, I can see the fiscal responsibility in this action. I don't like it at all. I think it's, I understand the urgency also, but I feel like we don't really know what's going to happen yet at the state level.
I think they're more, okay, they're concerned with our ending fund balance, okay? All right. I, I, I think the concern about, and I've been around Doug too long, but I think the concern about the local, uh, sales tax option funding coming down, uh, severely impacted for this fiscal year, I don't think, I, I'm, I'm gonna say it's gonna either be a wash or it's gonna be slightly below. However, when you go into that ending fund balance, that, you can mind, the next fiscal year starts, so we're gonna have some even more costs, so that would be the concern. That's, that's it in a nutshell. And, and, and like I told, said the other night, our biggest thing is, I asked Doug this, I said, Doug, you know, how do we dig ourselves out of this, you know? How do we do this? You know? And, and Doug's answer was, we don't. You know? Because growth doesn't pay for itself. So as we add a thousand more students, if, if the economy doesn't open up and, and provide, and I'm confident it will, I'm gonna be confident and say it will, but I do see the, the, uh, the, 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 you know, how they, the angst on their part because you, if that happens, here's what you get. You go into your next year and you're, you're, uh, you upside down again, we're gonna be upside down again, you're in the third year, Mr. Jordan, what happens in that fourth year, Mr. Jordan?
Lost your mind.
But what happens with the commissioners in that fourth year?
Oh, well, they, they have to put their name on the ballot.
There you go. So I, I think there's a lot of things that are coming and, and perhaps one of the things, maybe something we'll see a change, you know, uh, and, and I'm gonna be positive and say we will.
I hope so. I just, it, it's an unfortunate situation.
It is unfortunate.
Thank you.
Yeah, my concern is, we're gonna keep, it's gonna keep snowballing and we're gonna get hit with a tax increase, about like Murphill Pro did this last time.
Right, I agree with you.
I'd much rather see us increase at three, four percent every year.
Mm-hmm.
Versus get hit with a thirty percent increase all the time.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, if we think this is gonna go away, it's not.
No.
And it, and our teachers and, and all of our staff and, you know, bus contractors have taken the hit, we keep balancing budget on these guys' shoulders and it's not fair.
Absolutely.
And I, I just feel like we should be asking for at least two percent across the board here. Uh, and, and I know we'll be lucky to get to one and a half, they'll probably come back and say we ain't getting any raises, I don't know.
You know, and I wanna, I wanna give a shout out to you guys, uh, a lot of our, um, our colleagues in Southern Systems have not been able to pay their classified and, and, you know, and, and bus drivers. So that's a shout out to the board for, uh, making it, uh, making sure that they got paid during this time. And, and that's, that's a big thing. And, and I mean, I can't tell you how many classified people has, has told me they, they appreciate what you guys have done and, uh, I think that's a commitment on this board's, uh, part, you know, that, that was, that's a big stench to it.
Mr. Spurlock, if I may, is there anything that would prohibit us, uh, in going back, say, you know, everything opens up and we're doing well like we were January, February? Is there anything prohibiting us from going back and revisiting?
That's a great question. There wouldn't be nothing would prohibit us, now, if we went, I, I, a lot of it's, you know, Ms. Sharp, you know, you know, you and I both know that come sometime in early June prior to that June twenty-sixth date, we're probably gonna know what, that, when they come back, they'll probably do whatever they, they're gonna do very quickly. Uh, but let's just say that they do, and, and it's, this stays the same, nothing would prohibit us from going back if we saw things were picking up to do an amended budget. Yes, yes ma'am. It could, it'd be more likely to happen after the first semester, am I correct on that? So that you would see more, uh, uh, a process of that, but it could be done easily, yeah. I don't know if it has been done, but it could be done easily.
Whether it's easily or not, I don't know.
I mean, it could be for the process, we could bring it forward, yeah.
Could, yeah, we could do, you could amend the budget if the county commission would approve that, you know, to, I understand.
We could ask again.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
On increase on, on...
I don't remember it happening.
I don't remember it happening.
I don't remember it being asked for either.
And I don't remember us being seen at a time like this either.
No, that's true.
Thank goodness.
I think it's important to point out though, uh, uh, Mr. Spurlock, that, um, I'm, I'm sure there are many decisions and questions that the county commissioners individually and as a group will have, but, but, I mean, let's just face it, as we get closer and closer and closer, the major question for the month of June will be, are we gonna have a tax increase or not? And this budget does not cause a tax increase. So if there is one, and if you wanna blame somebody, I think the seven people in this room plus staff and the director are innocent, it's not in here.
I agree with you.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to, to, uh, approve version two of the 2021 GPS school fund budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here looking at that, I'm, okay.
He's waiting on a raise.
No, I'm waiting for a raise, yeah. Caught me napping. All right. We got the Smyrna Elementary, uh, School, the Smyrna Elementary School lease information only on tab ten, the town of Smyrna currently maintains lease with Rutherford County Schools for property located behind Smyrna Elementary School for recreational purposes. Under the lease, the town of Smyrna may renew the terms for the additional year upon written notice to the board. The town of Smyrna has chosen to exercise this renewal and is, has met the required timelines. The lease shall be renewed for additional year with one remaining opportunity of renewal prior to a new agreement being necessary.
Anybody got any questions on that? Okay. Seventeen. Anything else on insurance?
No additional updates.
Thank you. Directors update.
Yeah, just to follow up on our opening of, of schools, we're still working on that, looking at all the implication that that involves and, and, uh, uh, one of the things that I didn't mention, I sent y'all today, uh, looking at, one of the things we wanted to kinda get up, and we'll, I will continue to that, reach out to the health department and, uh, see, uh, how many, uh, school age children in Rutherford County who have been identified as having the COVID virus, um, and these, these, uh, and it was sixty-two was the number, uh, these could be Rutherford County students, these could be Murphill Pro she's, uh, school students, these could be our private schools, you know, it could be any of them. So right now, as it stands, from the ages of five to eighteen, there has been sixty-two confirmed, uh, cases, positive cases of COVID in the age group of five to seventeen. I think that's very important as we go through, as we look and, and finalize some of our plans, uh, for opening schools back up.
Is it counted minor considered? Forty-something thousand students, isn't it?
Do we have any information on breakdown on those sixty-two, for instance? I'm assuming there were no deaths, um, but for instance, how many were hospitalized?
We can follow up and find out.
Yeah, I'd love to know that.
We can do that.
All right. Ms. Johnson, Tennessee Legislative.
Nothing missing.
Thank you. Ms. Sharp, federal?
Well, I don't really have anything to report other than what was said. I was gonna talk about it, but the federal, uh, the feds have finally figured out a way to circumvent taxpayer money to the public schools, away from the public schools to the private schools, even though we're not probably gonna have vouchers this year, um, they found a way to fund them. So I think our parents don't need to be happy about that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, general discussion?
Chairman, I have a question, just kinda, kinda random, but I don't remember in the six years that I've been on the board, this ever been asked. I was looking over the graduation stuff a couple times and just thinking about the high school students or anything, look at high schools, and it dawned on me that all of our high schools, with the exception of Holloway and Riverdale, have a middle school attached to them. Is there any reason why we never opened or developed a middle school for Riverdale? Has that ever been discussed?
Not that I know of.
You mean on the same property?
No, not necessarily on the same property, I mean...
The same name?
No. I mean, like Smyrna High and, you know, Smyrna Middle's not on the same property, but yeah, the same name. I mean, it seems like all of the major high schools have a middle school associated to them.
Well, they all have, mo- most of them have three.
Yeah.
Associated with them, so I, no, I don't know why there was never a Riverdale middle. That's a good question.
You know, Ms. Todd?
Well, part of the naming, uh, scheme for Whitworth Buchanan was tied to the way that the purchase of the land was. When we, we opened Oakland Middle School and Whitworth Buchanan the same year, and the property that the board purchased, the county purchased from the family outing Buchanan, asked for the Whit, you know, that, that name to be attached, which is why it's named the way it is, but like, like Mr. Lee said, there's multiple schools that feed in, multiple middle schools that feed into Riverdale.
Right. Did it come up? Okay.
Okay.
There've been so many changes over the years that with, with every, every high school and then you build another high school and it's closer to a middle school, I mean, uh, wasn't that long ago that Barfield Elementary was, was, uh, was an elementary school, it was K through eight, so which is essentially feeding Riverdale. But, uh, I don't know the zone lines exactly now, but I would suggest that Riverdale gets students from, from, uh, from Buchanan and Christiana and Rock Vale and maybe some from Blackman Middle, I believe go to Riverdale, uh, that could be zoned to Blackman Middle, that, that area. Um, so it's, it's really kinda confusing, really, as to what, what's happened over the years. Not everything is as simple as Stewart's Creek Elementary and Middle School, they're right across the street, I mean, it, it doesn't work that way.
I have another question for something for general discussion, really ties into Tennessee Legislative. I, my understanding is the legislature's gonna reconvene, is the first of June. Do we have any idea or any feeling at all from any conversations or anything we've heard as to how much our legislative delegates are going to get involved in, what the reopening of schools is going to look like as far as any pending?
Yes, that's a great question. We had a, we talked to the, I mean, we were listening to the Commissioner bed and, and this is, I would have to agree with, it's gonna look different depending on the county. You know, obviously, we got some counties that's got three cases over these last two and a half months, so it's gonna be, it's gonna look different, uh, depending on...
I guess it kind of, just the whole thought process along the lines of, and this comes up so much with all the different things, was there, whether it was the textbooks or the curriculum and that, how much autonomy does the local district really have versus what we're gonna get told to do by the state or the legislature?
I don't think they're gonna give you, they're not gonna give us a prescriptive way of doing it, they're gonna, they're gonna reference CDC guidelines, how we get it done is gonna be predicated on the district. You know, one of the things is we're looking at now, we talked about, uh, there's a totally difference between our capacity in our schools as far as if we had to do an A B schedule, then they're on our buses. However, you know, I know, uh, I, I talked to Mr. Lee about this, ninety passenger bus, right? You said that, uh, we could put fifteen on air.
Based on social distance and the CDC guidelines, fif- it's, it's fifteen.
Now, one of the things that, and I had a conversation, I don't know who brought it up to me, but the, the, the seats in the buses are pretty high, okay? So, i- as long as we social distance side to side, I'm not so sure that we can't get half capacity on that bus.
We could on some buses, some of the older buses, the seats are not that high, some of the new, it, it's, it's gonna be on a bus by bus basis.
But, but what I'm saying is, fifteen is not gonna work.
No, well, financially, we know it can't work.
It can't work.
Wouldn't have enough drivers, huh?
Well, what we were, no, what we need is drivers, they would have to drive...
We'd run the route three times to get the kids there.
Yeah.
And you just can't, financially, you can't do it.
Do it. And you'd have to have personnel to come.
Sure.
You'd have to have personnel.
Yes.
That's come early, and some would have to stay late.
I mean, it affects the teachers, it affects changing a nu- all the elementaries almost an hour earlier, taking all the high schools, making them an hour later, kids are on the bus longer, kids are at the schools longer, it, it's a mess.
As we go forward with this and, and we, we see, you know, there's, I mean, uh, we're really, we're not gonna put anything, uh, you know, Williamson County puts something out, it's generic, but we're not gonna do it until we, you know, we're not gonna wait to last minute, but we're gonna do, bring it before the board, look at it, and, you know, I mean, there's three options, you can, um, you know, depending on what the C C, CDC guidelines are, i- if they're less stringent, I, I think we would be remiss to think that some would choose not to send their kids to school. So there's an option, you know, we, we ban, we passed this around, taken a survey, how many, and this is not, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, say that I'm not a strong proponent for, uh, digital learning, it's not, uh, one size fits all for everyone, uh, perhaps for some it is, but not for everyone, but if there was, if we gave the parents a choice, that could be an option. However, I, it, it comes with a lot of, uh, lot of, of strings attached in terms of, uh, we, you know, anytime we're doing this digital platform, we've gotta determine what constitutes a full day of instruction. We're meeting with, next Thursday with another vendor, is that, is it next Wednesday or Thursday? Wednesday. With another vendor, it's, uh, we don't know, we don't know a lot about it, we know one thing about it is, it's, uh, less expensive. So that's always good, less expensive is good. Is that correct? Okay. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna continue to look at this, this thing, I keep, you know, uh, I, I think it's a great idea, I'll go back and find out how many of the sixty-two, if any of them were hospitalized, uh, and that, you know, I, I mean, that's a little microcosm, but it, it, I mean, they're all out there, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what, how many, how many kids you think we'd have? Seventy thousand, oh, total, the ones, you take Murphill Pro City, Rutherford County, private schools, home schools, all that, close to seventy thousand? School age? Sounds like a good number, doesn't it? That's about right, isn't it? Yeah. So, so we're looking at sixty-two right now out of seventy-seven thousand, seventy?
Well, yeah, and one of my reason, my reasoning, I guess, behind asking to dig it a little deeper is because if, again, who knows how much you can believe of what you're reading these days about this virus out in, in the news, but if what they say, some of the experts say is true, healthy children are not your primary targets of this virus.
I agree with that.
They're compromised older adults, compromised adults with certain health conditions, but certainly not young, healthy children. So I'd like to think that's something that they would take into consideration with all these restrictions they're trying to, to impose.
And I don't think you could, you know, uh, I, I wore, I wore a mask for almost two and a half hours a day, Doug, I was about to pass out when I got through.
You're already having recs because of that?
I don't know, but we were in a meeting today and I wore a mask for two and a half hours and I'm gonna be honest with you, that was rough.
Yep.
It was rough. Doug was over there just smiling the whole time.
How could you tell if he was wearing a mask?
Oh, it comes, I could see his eyes, actually, every now and then he'd be, he'd look over at me and I'd be like, ooh.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since we are going back to, um, this legislature is gonna open back up and, um, I don't know, Ms. Johnson, if you remember, but I specifically remember one law, I can't tell you what the number is that was proposed, I probably should've looked at, looked at it before, but there is one that really concerns me and really should concern the rest of us, uh, and it's been since January since we've looked at it, so it's fallen off the map, but it's basically the open borders law that they were trying to get passed. So basically, if any of our schools had capacity in any bordering counties around them, if we have capacity, we have to take them. And, you know, you just can't let people come into your house, you can't control your costs and things like that, so, um, I'm asking my fellow board members, I know everybody's busy and everything, but we do need to get back in front of them and look and see what their priorities are and, you know, that may have changed, they may say that's low on their poll and, and consideration in getting passed, but there's a lot of things in there that we still need to lobby them against. And, you know, you just can't let people come into your house, you can't control your costs and things like that, so, um, I'm asking my fellow board members, I know everybody's busy and everything, but we do need to get back in front of them and look and see what their priorities are. And, you know, that may have changed, they may say that's low on their poll and, and consideration in getting passed, but there's a lot of things in there that we still need to lobby them against. So we don't have another, other than the health and ed meeting, we don't have another school board meeting, so we need to keep an eye on them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did hear the other night, uh, on, on television, which, uh, I didn't realize there was so much bad TV.
There's a lot.
Until, until recently, but anyway, just to end on a, to end on a, uh, perhaps a humorous note, a comedian said that, uh, uh, as a father of three, uh, he had learned one thing about the virus, teachers deserve a million dollars a year. I, I know what he, if you're a parent, you know what I'm talking about, I guess.
I don't think we'll put that in this year's budget.
I don't think it's gonna go in there, one point five percent, no.
If I could just mention, um, I was working from home this morning, and I heard all this commotion out on the street and, uh, didn't realize, I guess we've had a lot of teachers and even bus drivers and people that are doing these drive-bys for the kids and yelling, and they came down our street this morning, and I, I went out on the front porch, and I was watching, we had a little six-year-old that lives next door that's, you know, everybody's best buddy, and some kids across the street that have just recently started school, and it was just, it was so cool to watch. Those kids were so excited, and I just, as far as shout-outs go, these teachers and people in our system that are going to those kinda lengths to show their kids they still love them, and they care and support them, it was just amazing. So if anybody is watching that was on any of those buses or driving those trucks and cars, um, this morning, the folks on Aberdeen Circle certainly enjoyed the show, so.
I would echo that, um, my children have received, actual teachers have come and knocked on the door and brought them handwritten letters, and I, I'm, I'm impressed that, that they have the time or that they love ours, I mean, we're just blessed, so it's, it's impressive.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Nothing else, we're adjourned.